August 26, 2025, regular planning commission meeting to order. Roll call please.
Commissioner Demato. Commission by Commissioner Shapiro. Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Hazel. Yes. Vice Chair. Vice Chair Riley.
I'm here.
Chair Volkart.
Here.
And Council Liaison Pacheco. I believe you have a quorum.
Thank you. And if everybody can just check their microphone and make sure I forgot to do it myself there, but I've got a green dot in front of me now, so should have a green dot in front of you. And then if just looking at the planning commission for confirmation of the agenda, make sure looks acceptable. And if it doesn't, expect you to speak up. Otherwise, I'm going to assume that everything looks in order. I'm I'm still going to get Commissioner Riley, if we're going to move on with the agenda as is unless you add an objection. I don't I don't expect any objections, but okay, brief announcements by staff, please.
Thank you. And just for clarification, I Commissioner. Oh, there's I see.
Sorry, I was muted. I am here.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if it's just me, but everything's frozen. I can see Chair Riley moving, but that's it. Hi. I can't hear you.
Everybody's frozen but Jason.
That's strange.
It just invited me to rejoin. Good. So any questions about that piece?
No. So I guess I do have one question. I thought that the overlay, the purpose of the overlay was because it did set a number of drive-throughs.
No, it did. It did. The only recommendation in this that in the staff report or in the in the code changes that were presented to you all was that there is there was one location in the code where the overlay wasn't well referenced, so it added a cross reference to it. But that was that was the only.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
And um. Commissioner Demato, maybe you would mention, because I don't think anybody's hearing me or maybe anybody else. Anyway, I was speaking, but I'm pretty sure the folks on uh, Vice Chair Riley and Commissioner Hazel didn't hear me. Um.
Correct. I couldn't hear you until now. Yeah.
Yeah, I just got audio too, but I heard the last bit.
And I know, and I think the recording shut out when it went down. I don't know if it's, you might have to start recording.
Oh.
Progress. There goes.
And I think you need to probably mute your, I think you may be the echo.
Okay.
Thanks, Hector.
And so my, my audio is, is working. You're, you're good. Okay. So um, I, why don't I just back up and say that the city council adopted all of the corridor revisioning recommendations as proposed by uh, by city council adopted all of those code revisions as recommended by the commission. Um. The next item that I listed here is that the staff have submitted a housing planning assistance grant to, uh, application to DLCD um, for code work, um, that could tap, could tackle a significant proportion of that cleanup list that's in your packet and also to prepare work towards a urban growth boundary swap um, and that we should hear over the next few months, that would be work that would commence in uh, twenty twenty six. And then um, rather than me guessing which code compliance issues you all might want an update on, why don't I uh, would uh, open the floor to questions about code compli- any code compliance uh, questions you all want to check, get an update on.
So. So is that like on the list, the truck and travel squid and that all? Yeah. What were you thinking about it?
Yeah, yes, that would, that.
So yeah, go ahead.
What?
Then like squid, I was just.
Yep. So squid um, has um, agreed to come in and, and um, submit an application to, for a land use approval for that parking lot that they're operating on West Valley View. Um, I'm not. You know, I don't, we didn't want to prejudge it and tell them that they weren't going to be successful. Certainly, if they wanted to improve that lot to, to code, they could be successful. Um, but um, but yeah, they've been informed that they need to come in and have agreed to come in and, and submit for land use approval for that site.
Do they have a time limit if they don't, or?
They do. I don't know off the top of my head when that is.
I noticed they put some kind of screening on the part of when there's something.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they have a timeline.
Commissioner Hazel?
Um, I, yes, thank you. Just a question about that. Is that even a, a legal and allowed use there? At all? Even if they had it paved and everything? Like, I think that would. It's been unfortunate. I realize, you know, that we're not here for just judgment calls, but um, that's for the entryway to talent to just have it be a parking area, you know, where a sales lot seems unfortunate. So you know, I'm just wondering, is that, would that be legal no matter what if they pave it over and um?
Uh.
That's a possibility.
I would say no matter what, but um, I believe uh, on, auto sales. Uh. I'm not sure in that zone off the top of my head whether auto sales would have to be enclosed or not. Um, in some zones, we allow it. Um, in some zones, we only allow it if entirely enclosed. Um, but so I, I, as I said, I wouldn't want to prejudge whether we could approve what they may propose. I, I think it would prob- I think you're right that it's likely difficult for them to um, for us to approve what they're currently doing out there.
Okay, thanks.
And then the, as far as the truck and travel uh, center, we've got a, a number, number of issues that we are working through uh, with them. Including the um, the landscaping. Um, they, we finally found uh, or Todd, back our code compliance uh, person has been visiting repeatedly and leaving notices, uh, was finally able to communicate with somebody this week who represented their, um, that they had turned off their uh, their irrigation because of the number of leaks that they had in it and are working with their um, their contractor and believe it's under warranty and working to get that irrigation repaired. Given that this is probably not the best time for planting, replanting those beds. I don't think we're gonna necessarily demand that they act within the next couple of weeks, but um, we, we gave them a ten, a ten day notice, but I, I don't think we would be, we will be strict about that timeline. Given where we are in the.
Sorry.
Yes, yeah. And, and generally speaking, I, well, our, believe our, our notice gives them ten, ten days to fix it or present us with a timeline or a plan to address the issue. Um, as far as the, the larger issues of the un, unpermitted work there, um, we are still um, have not made a tremendous amount of progress. Um, the uh, we have been working with their, their turn, their attorneys for a couple of months. Um, they are, uh, we've pre- prepared some materials for them that they've requested to make the case to their insurance uh, to place, make an insurance claim. Um, they are facing a pretty significant bill um, to uh, address the, the impacts that they, they had on the mitigation site there. Um, we are, we are probably, well, it's been a, a couple of weeks since I reviewed the deadlines that we gave them. Um, but um, reasonably confident that we've, we've passed a couple of them. Those deadlines were really um, well, they're per- in part driven by the need for at the cost that's been proposed by Freshwater Trust to uh, address that mitigation site. That cost assumes that they're moving their, the freshwater trust is able to replant that site this fall. So um, we are um, coming down to, I think, either a, you know, moving into an enforcement mode or they need to um, they need, they need to respond to the city's proposal.
And then, and then on, on the truck stop that um, there is no application for paving the lot, but in to the city? What's the status on that?
That's correct. They have not, they have not submitted.
Okay.
They had a pre-app in which, during which we told them that we, we weren't interested in seeing an application unless it included addressing the, the, the mitigating the unpermitted work.
And have you communicated at all with them on the gravel being drug from their lot onto the aprons in the road or?
I, I have not, no.
Right. Yeah, it's uh, yeah, I mean, it, it's pretty obvious that trucks are dragging it out there and it's depositing and, and not good for the bed, but it is what it is, I guess, for now, so. I'm sorry if I cut you off, Commissioner Shapiro earlier. Okay, I'm, I'm trying to watch uh, I can, Hazel and Riley to make sure I don't see any hands up. Uh, no, okay. Uh, Commissioner Riley, you don't want to inquire on the, some of the projects? I thought you had questions on some of the projects. Uh, this would be a good time if you, unless you want to save it for propositions and remarks. I thought you had questions about um, some of the applications.
There was, well, there was one, but um, I can, I, I can talk, but that's it. Yeah, it's not really, unless it's before the planning commission. I don't think this would be the right time to talk about it, but.
Okay, well, stuff that we were just discussing actually hasn't been before us and um, and that's fine. If you want to say that, that's fine. I, I did. It's fine by me. Um. Okay, um. So I guess we can move on to, if, that there's nothing else or one more thing?
Well, yeah, one more uh, brief announcement from staff. Uh, we do have some uh, forthcoming staffing changes. Uh, Cecilia um, was uh, received another offer from uh, Central Point. They've been uh, and have convinced her that that, that position there would be um, more in tune with where she is at in terms of her career. I think the, the job she, the position she agreed to take on with City of Talent is certainly um, a cha- a challenge and a stretch for her. And uh, we, we've had, I had several conversations with her about what additional support beyond what we were already providing might work for her, but I think ultimately she concluded that it just wasn't a comfortable position for her. She didn't, she didn't feel confident that she could succeed in it. So um, I wished her all the best. And uh, her last day will be the last, last uh, business day in August. We have, uh, there is on the city website a job announcement, um, rather than just a city planner. Um, we're going out for a community development director slash city planner. Um, the roles are very similar, um, but is classed differently, so we can uh, offer um, uh, a higher starting salary and uh, and I think the title it in and of itself uh, maybe, maybe um, attract uh, some folks. So um, that is uh, open currently.
Well, best of luck to Cecilia um, and congratulations to Central Point, I guess. Counsel clerk, I, Commissioner clerk.
Yeah, um. Yeah, uh, um, on, on uh, Highway ninety nine, um, there was a issue around the ceremony bagels uh, development where um, the trees that they planted, and I think with the cities, the trees that the um, city approved were not on the approved street tree list uh, at the time. Um, and with that property around the bagel place, uh, we um, uh, you know, brought this to Alex's attention and we got uh, some of the OWEB funded trees uh, planted, actually interplanted around the red buds that they'd put in and it's, and it's just gonna be a huge difference. Uh, but around that ti- same time, I noticed that the same situation um, had occurred at uh, I think it's two ten uh, around the grab and go and whatever else is uh, in that little strip mall. Is that where the?
I think it's one oh five. You gotta come the other way to the hundred block. It's, I think it's one oh five. Is that?
Okay. All right. Yeah, I may have the, yeah. Anyway, the grab and go, the, the development around the grab and go. Um, yeah, they, you know, counting the ones along Highway ninety nine and the ones in the parking lot in the back, they've got thirteen. They planted thirteen trees, only four of those, uh, which would be the zelkobas are on the approved uh, street tree list. And I'm just um, you know, especially the piece on ninety nine is um, it's a high priority area for uh, you know, growing canopy to reduce urban heat island. Um, keep things pedestrian uh, friendly and all. And um, wondering if there's any recourse or options that the city has to get that right at this stage.
Right. Thank you, uh, Commissioner. I, I I did not get, I, I've been confused and wondering what the other property was. So I haven't been back to look at the one oh five application to see if we in fact approved the incorrect trees there as well. So I think that's, that's my next step. I wa- I was talking to um, I, I, and I do struggle with what both. Well, I think, I think our authority is probably reasonably clear to require somebody to comply with code, even if we did approve the wrong trees. Um. In the first case, as you mentioned, we did have the opportunity of being able to go um, correct the situation at no cost to the property owner. Um, and to be frank, I, 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 I do still struggle with what, what is the? I think there are some, some cases where we would want to exercise that authority and some cases where we would not. And um, but uh, with, with this one, and I, and I haven't had frankly, time to really focus on exactly what that case is. Um, but um, we'll, we'll look at the one oh five grab and go approval and, and if, if there weren't, they're not the correctly approved trees, then that makes the, the answer to your question a lot, a lot easier from my perspective.
Yeah, I think to some degree, you'll probably have to use your judgment on the status of repeat offenders. Um, um, and um, or I can imagine that you would. Um, and then the other a- aspect that Alex brought up about that is that um, it's a little confusing. What is a street tree? I mean, obviously, if they're on the street, they're a street tree. If they're required for landscaping, but they're on a parking lot, are they a street tree? Do you know the answer to that? I don't. So.
I don't offhand. I mean, um, certainly not every tree in the landscape is a tree, is a street tree, but uh, a tree, you know, in or directly adjacent to a parking lot pretty much has the same qualifications and um, yeah, but I don't know what the, how the code reads.
We might need to look at that.
That's what, that's what's important.
Possibly clarify it too, so.
Yeah.
Will do.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks for uh, mentioning that one. That's uh.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, who do we have? Is it? Commissioner Hazel?
Hi, thanks. So on the same um, topic, I was just wondering, at the city level, when somebody applies, um, when, you know, they submit their plans, is there, uh, do we give them a checklist? And if we don't, that might be helpful, where you have a checklist of all of the allowed trees and they have to actually check off which trees they're planting there? And if they're not on that list, they can't be planted? That, you know, they could say how many they're planting and which ones they are. I just think that would be helpful so that nothing's left up to guessing for developers or builders.
I appreciate the suggestion. I'm not sure. And, and with the new street tree lists, it'd be a great opportunity to improve whatever tool we have. Um, and whi- which reminded me, I, I believe that council is awaiting a recommendation from the Herbivore forestry committee on the street tree list.
That, that goes back to like January.
Are, are we ready to take it, council?
Yeah.
Okay, so I.
Came from the committee first and it was a, it was uh, I believe the way we worded it is to recommend to planning commission and the city council.
Okay.
But with the idea that it would come here first.
Great, thank you for clarifying that. I will get that scheduled on ca- on the council.
Great.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, can, uh, can we turn to approval of minutes from July twenty second? Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes? Assume yes, unless I hear otherwise. And if there's any suggested changes, any revisions to the minutes, please let me know. And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to uh, approve the minutes of July twenty second.
A second. Oh, go ahead.
Um, we've got a um, motion by Commissioner Di Amato and a second by Commissioner Shapiro uh, to approve the minutes from July twenty second. Uh, roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Demato?
Yeah.
Commissioner Shapiro? Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Hazel?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Riley?
Yes.
Chair Volkart?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I don't see any public on Zoom. Uh, but we have one m- public person here. Just want to make sure that there's no public comment, but I don't think so. No, no public comment on non-agenda items, so. Non agenda items. So we're on to discussion items and BLI. So. Review staff.
Great. And my my connection just flickered. And are you all hearing me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just as one word of introduction, we've got the Green Top team here. And. They they do a number of things for the city. So Matt Brinkley is going to kick us off and then Nikki Hart Brinkley is also going to. Address this topic. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to note the draft new zoning map that you all have in front of you. Vice Chair Riley and Commissioner Hazel, I'll make sure that you have it. This is a draft of an updated zoning map. That I think is a lot more legible and includes the the drive through overlay and and historic downtown district. More legibly. So. That's thanks to Nikki's work and be a good opportunity if if you all see opportunities for to for improvement to. To mention them before we spend a lot of money printing big versions.
I'm just curious, other than adding overlays, did any of the zone change? The boundary?
I can't I can't hear her.
So for for the record, Nikki Hart Brinkley was saying that she did not have any zoning. Zone map changes to make as part of the update, but I would notice. Note, she didn't start with the old map as her basis. She started with the the city's. Electronic. Data layer. So that she wouldn't need to go and check and see if there have been zone changes since the last time the map was created because. Presumably those were recorded in the city's data layers. They haven't.
I just know there's been there's been discussion about since we amended codes several years ago about looking at mending actual districts. Now that we've got updated code. And I'm aware, although I missed a few months there, that that process never happened. So I was expecting it. Changes to existing zoning at this point.
This is just a new map.
Yeah, I, this is Nikki Hart Brinkley. I'm not aware of any zoning changes. Nothing has come across my desk to to change zoning. Outside of the annexations. But what I can do is I can do a sweep of the land. Use permits for zone changes for. Maybe the past three years, and that should capture anything that maybe didn't quite make it to my desk, but. Maybe we had small changes along the way that just aren't coming to mind right now and maybe do that before. Before we send things for large format printing. And if they're.
The only. The only one I'm aware of is the one on Highway ninety nine at Magnolia Heights, the adjacent Magnolia Heights. But that's outside of three years ago. Yeah, definitely. Because it was built, it burned in the fire, right of sake.
All right, well, apologies for the 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 sidetrack, but I wanted to be sure to mention that. And so why don't I turn it over to Matt to start the discussion on the buildable lands inventory?
Okay, thanks. And good evening, Commissioners Chair. Matt Brinkley, Green Top Planning here tonight with Nikki Hart Brinkley, who is actually going to take you through. The BLI, but I'm going to start if I can share my screen. Let's see if this. Works. No. There we go. Okay. So, yep, there we have the whole thing. So. I'm just going to kick this off by kind of putting the residential buildable lands inventory. Into context and explaining kind of the the why and the what. Of it. And then Nikki is going to actually go through what it looks like. So. I'll talk about that. Nikki, you'll do the second part and then I'll come back and. Talk about next steps. And this will be a a recommendation eventually that. You would make two city councils. So this is a. Type four legislative land use decision. So planning commission being the recommending body in this particular case, making a recommendation to city council for adoption of the BLI into your comprehensive plan. So why are we talking about a residential buildable lands inventory? Like many things, land use in the state of Oregon, because the state of Oregon tells us to do so. So. This is actually the very first section out of statewide planning goal ten, and that is the. Goal that relates to housing. This is the the first thing that you encounter if you read that section of administrative rule. And it says to provide for housing needs of citizens, state of buildable lands. Buildable lands for residential use shall be inventoried. So. No ambiguity there about the responsibilities of local jurisdictions, counties and cities alike. It is actually an obligation that cities have and counties have to do a residential buildable lands inventory. The second part of this is important and related, but it's not really what we're talking about tonight. And that is. That to then make plans to address the need for land for the development of housing. And that's a different thing. So tonight we're talking about the residential buildable lands inventory, and that is really the. Fundamental building block for the next step, which is a housing needs or housing capacity analysis. I think it's about to be renamed something else because of. House Bill two thousand one of twenty twenty three, but that's what it's been called in the past. So. The next step after this would be to look at. Now knowing how much land you have to build housing on, how many homes can be built? But that's not really the function of the residential buildable lands inventory. That with the RBLI, we're really just trying to figure out how much of what kinds of buildable land. You have for developing housing. And these fall into several different categories. These categories are all terms of art. They are defined in state statute and administrative rule. And so it's not necessarily the kind of thing where if you look at it and it, you know, it it walks like a whatever and it, you know. These are things that you actually have to read the administrative rules. So vacant land is is kind of what you would think it is. It's land that doesn't have any. Significant structures on it. The challenging one is partially vacant. And this is where. We use what are called safe harbors to determine how much land where say maybe there's a house, how much of the land that that house is on. Could be further subdivided, further developed. And this is, this is particularly important for the city of talent because you have the railroad district where you have large tracks. Of what would appear to be vacant land, but they have a single home in many cases, I think, on on those tracks of land. So. They might not show up as vacant. They might show up as partially vacant, even though for all intents and purposes, they are vacant because you have. Acres and acres of land that doesn't have a house on it. And presumably could be subdivided and then developed. Finally, you have developed. Whether a lot is fully developed is. Partly administrative rules, state statute and the guidance that is provided there. It is also a little bit of art and discretion. And so, as I mentioned earlier, this is a legislative process. So the city does have some discretion. And this is the kind of case where maybe the safe harbor doesn't exactly fit and you can look. At a developed lot and say, yeah, there's more than half an acre. I forget what the safe harbor, a quarter acre. But there's no way that you're going to be able to get. Another building on that lot. So there is some discretion. Finally, undevelopable really has to do with all of the constraints, particularly environmental constraints. So floodplain, environmentally sensitive lands, things like that. And Nikki. Is going to walk you through all of that, starting now.
Do you want me just to pull up the website?
Where is it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners and Chair. I'm Nikki Hart Brinkley. And some of you have been on this journey with me previously. Is that not sharing?
Yeah.
I would like to share that screen with you. It's your new. Fancier. Community development map, but. Let's concentrate on this first. So some of you have been on this tour with me before. And I will try to keep it fairly brief, though. If you have been on the tour with me before, you'll remember that I absolutely love buildable lands inventories. They're one of the most. Fun things I do from both a GAS and planning perspective. And I really. Enjoy the process of it and the utility of it. I think these are great tools for us to understand. What we have and and what we need. So I'll just go over really briefly. The application that you're looking at. Is the culmination of all of the work that went into the buildable lands inventory. And as Matt, you know, said, it it really establishes current conditions within a city. And measures how much buildable land exists within that city. The need for that. We we have not had a buildable lands inventory done since twenty seventeen. Of course, a lot of changes have taken place. And the need to refresh, to refresh that inventory. Is is significant, especially after the fire, all of the changes and the work ahead. For NHCA or NHA. So I have here on the homepage, resources for further reading. Like Matt indicated, this this process follows very closely OAR six sixty zero thirty eight, the simplified urban growth boundary method. The reason for that is it's a building block of UGB, and that is a pretty prescriptive process. So we want to to do the buildable lands inventory in a way that that mirrors those needs for for further work. You know, for OARs related to UGB amendments and NHCA's. So I've got a number of resources there. For further reading. The the project milestones and upcoming events. So right at the bottom of the page, you'll see kind of the history of this. We completed the draft buildable lands inventory back in early twenty twenty four. We held stakeholder workshop and public open house in March, followed by. A joint city council and planning committee meeting June twenty fifth, which was when I was with you all last. And then the final buildable lands inventory and presentation was in October. Of of this year. Sorry, I didn't put twenty twenty. Five in there or twenty twenty four in there. Gosh. So and then we have today's meeting. So we're here again to review this. And I appreciate Matt putting it into context of some of the other things that are on tap for the planning commission. The first thing that we do in a buildable lands inventory is examine current conditions. The buildable lands inventory process allows you to take a look at your residential and commercial zones. Or comprehensive plan designations. Because talent zones have more information about density than the comprehensive plan does. I opted for using the zoning within the city limits and then the for the comprehensive plan designations, anything outside of the. City limits, but within the UGB was used. So this just takes a look at the zoning and comprehensive plan. Designations. And then we get into the buildable lands density status. So what this asks us to do. Is take a look at the zoning and what capacity is allowed in those zones. And assign them to low, medium and high density. And again, there are some. Safe harbors with that. So it it the OARs lay out. The density for each of those categories. So here I've assigned those categories to your residential. Zones. And that again lays that groundwork for later HCA, because then we know what the city currently allows. In those particular zones. Matt talked about the environmental and development constraints. And this is where we start off with that. And sorry, it takes a minute to load here. These are kind of heavy. The physical constraints to lands includes things like the floodway. The annual chance flood hazard, that one percent annual chance. As well as the local wetlands inventory and then setbacks that are particular to the city of talent, including that thirty five foot. Buffer around the regulatory floodway, the fifty foot riparian setback. And the setbacks from wetlands as well. We also have slopes of twenty five percent or greater in a one acre contiguous area. So that basically just means that anything that. Is interconnected and really slopy, that's going to have some additional constraints to development with cost of infrastructure. So again, those safe harbors just allow us to look at that land and say, that's going to be constrained for development because of environmental conditions. The. The tab here breaks down everything into its different development constraints. But this first map here shows you everything. In in conjunction with each other, and then it breaks it down into the different types of constraints, flood hazards. Wetlands inventory, riparian and so on. The initial draft buildable lands inventory is still here for you to take a look at. Not a lot changed between the draft and the final buildable lands inventory. But we did want to make sure that we had that transparency. So the draft is still available for your review. And then the final buildable lands inventory here. Shows the static map here. With all of your vacant, partially vacant, developed and undevelopable. And those are those four categories that Matt talked about earlier. There's also some undevelopable categories that were actually. Classified as residential zoned, but because they're. Open space or private roads or have some other exempt public use. Those are considered undevelopable as well. And then the final tab here, I've got an interactive map, excuse me, set up. And you can click on any property to see its status. So if you have questions about why something is, you know, partially vacant. And this is taking a moment to load as well. But it will. There we go. So you can click on any property and it will tell you a bit of information about that property. If it intersected with any of the environmental constraints and ultimately. How much of that land is available for development? The one I picked has zero acres available for development.
The one you picked is a former planning commissioner, actually. Well done.
I often pick pick one that somebody actually lives on just randomly. And then. You'll see in your packet that there's some breakdowns about what is available and and what is fully built out. and and what is fully built out. Tax cuts by land use classification. So this just summarizes by density the overall look of of talent. So you have a lot of medium and high density residential, low density residential is is smaller. And then you've got your employment lands, parks, and public uses. And then what you have available for low, medium, high density residential, developable lands. We've we've classified those as as vacant and partially vacant. And most of what you have is low density. So there's very little medium density, very little high density available. And again, these figures may have changed a bit since the last time we were together, since we firmed these numbers up. Nothing to really move the needle. But again, there there might have been a little bit of infill that would explain why some of these are are more built out than than what they were when we were together last. So overall, you have about 100 acres of partially vacant and 12 acres of vacant lands. Most of the land in residential zones is developed with very little partially vacant and vacant. And in either the static map or the interactive map, you'll be able to see these partially vacant lands. These are the ones that are hatched in orange. And they're showing us where those where those partially vacant lands are. Got a little bit of of green here that's vacant. And again, some of those will be infilled since since this was last updated. But again, nothing, nothing major. And everything else in red is fully developed. And the things that are grayed out are are undevelopable, a mix of public lands, things like that. And so that is the tour of the buildable lands inventory application. And I'd be glad to take any questions that you have.
Can I ask you a question? The pie chart for the buildable lands, that was when you were saying that there isn't much RMD, that's for what's available for building, though, right?
Yes.
Yeah, right. Just making sure. Because when I look at your map here, it's obviously the big sections of RMD, big areas, but it's
Right.
Yeah. And then likewise, it's also skewed a little on the RLV side. It would appear due to things like Belmont up there. Big, I mean, that's a big
Yeah, yeah. All of those areas here are are low density. So pretty much what is available is partially vacant, and it is in low density.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Oh, actually, I'm if somebody keeps it, it helps. Can you help keep it? And I don't know if there's if a hand comes up. Can we see the environmental constraints overlay again? Just I'm just when I probably asked you this before, I'm just curious about the wetland inventory. So for instance, behind the old Walmart building for sale, if anybody wants to or rent or lose if anybody needs a big building. We had a applicant come before us, so right behind that property. He actually partitioned the property behind it and came before us for his own co-change, comp map plan change. And we discovered or a couple of enterprising planning commissioners are very watchful planning commissioners, I should say. Discovered a compensatory mitigated wetland in there. Does that stuff get that stuff wouldn't get captured because it's not part of the inventory, right? It's a or is it part of the inventory?
It it is part of the the environmental constraints. And I remember the application that you're talking about, and that there does appear to be a mapping. I don't know if we would call it an error or at least a change from the time that your local wetlands inventory was completed to now. The funny thing about water is it doesn't tend to stay in one place. And so so I don't want to say it was a mapping error at the, you know, local wetlands inventory, but I definitely note that difference in the in the local wetlands inventory that we have and the aerial imagery from from what is, you know, currently showing where that wetland clearly is. I remember that there is a difference there. The the inventory that would have been used for this did include that original, you know, local wetlands inventory, that is the authoritative wetlands inventory for the city of talent, because it has been adopted through DSL. It does also include a 50 foot buffer outside of the wetlands inventory. That stuff all kind of gets mushed together and and with all of the other environmental constraints. So I can't say that that small difference in that local wetland inventory area made much of a difference, especially because we included that 50 foot right wetland setback. And it's also in an area that's impacted by riparian setbacks as well, as well as, I think, 1% annual flood chance. So there's a lot of stuff going on over there. I don't know that that made a big difference, but I do remember the area that you're talking
And I remember you describing it as more of a macro tool. You're not gonna we're also not capturing our setbacks or our right of ways and things where we're unapproved, no curb gutter and sidewalk and a lot of the RLV or RMD, actually, really. But that, I mean, I don't even know which way that would flip it. But so I understand that. I just wanted it. It's not. So this map, well, that's just zoning. This isn't a tool for us to be obviously looking on a detailed parcel for like wanting to know the specifics of a parcel.
Yeah, it does include some of the things that that we do use. So say a applicant comes in with a site plan. We will take a look at it, and the applicant should have looked at the map as well to see where those constraints are, to see where those setbacks are. Those things are are the things that are in this map. But there's also some additional things that that the that the buildable lands inventory lays out that that we take out. But but for the most part, yes, they they are very similar to what an applicant might use when they apply for a site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And one thing. Well, I'll show it to you at the end. I can get off that. So I'll take any additional questions before I to that. Anything else? Anything from online?
If I might, could I just clarify my understanding of your answer to the chair's question? The the city's wetlands inventory should include compensatory wetlands. In this case, it may not have, but by and large those are like very likely covered by flood floodplains. So they would be correctly categorized for the purpose of the DLR.
Yeah.
What what year was the local wetland inventory original? Do you know?
Oh, gosh, I want to say it was 2009, but I might just be pulling that out of my hat.
No, it was it was it was in 1997.
That was 97? Okay.
It's published on the Department of State Lands website when it was accepted into their program. So it crossed all the hurdles, it checked all the boxes, and was accepted as the authoritative wetlands.
I only ask because I realize the one we're referencing probably predated that because I assume that it's part of the Walmart construction. And so, yeah, so that's quite scary. Any questions? Missus Riley Hazel? Just making sure I'm not missing you here. Okay, thanks.
Oh, you're welcome. And bring something back up here if I can find it. Here we go. Nope, that was the community development.
Did you have the the link to the web application up? That was the map. It it wasn't the application.
There, I just wanted to note that there is a new tool for web mapping, all of these different environmental and development constraints and zoning. And I have provided that for some review to city staff, still making a few adjustments on it. But I'd love everybody's feedback on it. And so I'll make sure that Alex has that and and can pass that along as well.
Good, thank you.
And I should note that the staffer for it was incorrect. The next page, it conflicts with the next page of the of the packet. So the next step, a motion tonight would not be appropriate or necessary, because we'll come back for a public hearing on this, at which point you would be taking the act, the actual action to recommend council adoption.
And Alex, do we know when, like, what's the timeframe? I feel like these chats have been going on.
Oh, good question. That is that is the next item on our agenda this evening.
The scheduling?
Chair, does it make sense for me to move to that?
Yeah, sorry. I was just trying to pull that up and but go ahead and I'll try to work on pulling it up.
So the the next item on the agenda was meeting schedule and work plan, including climate friendly area, climate friendly and equitable communities compliance. So before before I delve into the details here, I think the the big picture items that I'm hoping to get feedback from from the commission on are one. Well, I guess the first item is just to make sure there's an awareness and a shared understanding of what we are expected to tackle or might hope to tackle, or I guess another word way to put it would be, we've agreed to tackle when we requested DLCD extension to the end of this year on our our CFA and CFAC compliance. So one, there's a just wanted to make sure that there's an awareness of that. Then the related topic that I that I wanted feedback on is under under your bylaws, I understand that there is this secondary monthly meeting that exists. My thought is, and I I'm aware that or have seen a few times, even in my short time here, interest in the planning commission and going pretty deeply into some issues and and you know, an interest in fully understanding issues before being asked to act on them. So I think what the question I'm raising is, does it make sense for us to think about schedule planning, some of these, some of these off these secondary meetings as work sessions? There, there's the potential, there's the possibility to structure them as purely informational, where you all could stay away from deliberation in such a manner you wouldn't necessarily need quorum to do it. But I I wanted to, so that that's the that's really the big picture question that I wanted to raise tonight is is to how much how much time do we need to dedicate to this work? And with that, maybe I'll I'll touch on the highlights on what's on this on this schedule. So what we'd be working toward at the next section, next several sessions or one single session would be to be preparing for a public hearing at the end of October. The the items that that what the schedule shows that we we would be tackling in that public hearing would be all comp plan topics. So a public hearing on on complam amendments that would include adopting the climate friendly area map. The climate friendly area text that belongs in the comp plan. The multimodal map, which has been provided previously and was, I think, completed as part part of that same CFA study and the buildable land inventory. That's quite a bit of of work, particularly if you all have detailed questions. Hence, my question about having some potentially some more work time. Why don't I step through at a high level the the remainder? So thinking about public hearing in November. That is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So whether that's the exact right date, I think, is is an important question to discuss. But that would be adopting the code amendment changes required to make a climate friendly area compatible with the statutory requirements. Parking code amendments that you've seen briefly in the context of the corridor plan recommendations. Essentially, the key change there being essentially eliminating parking requirements for residential uses in in the CFA itself and and close to the CFA. There are mass timber and middle housing cleanup items that you've seen parts of. But that really should be included in in this this overall. Well, I think ideally would be included in these these overall cleanups. Of course, to comply by the end of the year, city council would need to act as well. So this is a very, this is frankly appears to me a tight schedule, and we may not hit it. We won't end up in I'll avoid the trade land use jokes. There, I think, I think DLCD will be happy with us to the extent that we are making progress and and making good efforts towards compliance. We, the, I think, the more significant problem that we would create if we aren't able to meet the deadline is dealing with applications that came in in January, where applicants could potentially argue that the requirements that we're placing on them don't comply with state statute. So I think it's definitely in our interest to do what we can to meet those, to meet that deadline. That last statement, I'm reasonably confident on, but not totally confident on. So I've asked Matt if I captured the the best way for us to think about the urgency of coming into compliance by the by the end of the year, what the consequences
What the consequences are. I think council liaison has to go to planning jail until they're all of the code amendments are finally adopted. I think Alex is right. In the case of the designating the CFA, it's kind of weird, because if you don't designate it, an applicant could come in, I guess, and say, well, this is likely where the CFA was going to be. And so I'm going to build this building up to the maximum that state law allows within a CFA, because the city of talent hasn't adopted its own local standards. But it mostly it creates confusion more than anything else, and you want to probably avoid that because you want to have good development happening in talent and within the CFA. So with the with the CFA, I it seems like it's probably a a pretty manageable goal to get those things done by the end of the year.
Thank you. So I I think one other thing preliminary to to the commission's discussion or or instructions to staff that might be helpful is to just to at a very high level remind you all about what what the CFA area that's Chris are presumed are working presumption as a staff of what that area is. I provided a link in the I provided a link in the, the email to that document. I did bring some color coffins. Counsel, if you could pass those around. The, at, at the end of the day, the, the city's required to adopt a climate friendly area. And it's. It's got to be close to or contiguous with high quality transit. And achieve and have. A develop, development potential. Those two combinations really limit. The flexibility that we've got in terms.
Can you repeat them again?
Sorry. Sir, access to high capacity transit or the best transit that is available. And, and development potential. And so there are, there are a number of other criterias as well. But that, and that, that's what. You know, I'm, I'm proposing to really focus on. In, at the next meeting, whether that's the ninth of September or the twenty third of September is, is walking through. What, what drove that decision? And to see if you all agree with that decision. Frankly, I'm, I, I believe it's, was, it seems pretty well baked to me. But I, and I'm hopeful that you all see it the same way. But I think before we ask you to adopt it, we need to make that, or ask you to recommend its adoption. We need to make sure. And so anyway, I, I wanted to reintroduce that. And, and as I said, the, the full forty page report was linked in the, the email that I sent you with the agenda.
Commissioner DiMano?
I do, I do have a lot of questions. And especially if that's chosen. So I would prefer, and I would add an additional meeting rather than being at our planning commission until ten o'clock. That's very difficult for me all the time. So I'm, I'm open to another meeting where we have these, you know, a lot of the questions answered before it actually comes to a. Formality, but I would just put that out there that I'm.
Commissioner Spear?
Yeah, I'm open to it too, because this is, this, the debate really concerns me. And I would like to have a work study session about it as well and really.
And just to be clear, that I, I'm proposing a minimum of one for sure. But I, I think it would be great to, to, to have, to start earlier. To, to get a sense of whether that's, that's sufficient.
Stay, start earlier than six thirty, I mean, or start earlier.
Earlier in time, in time.
Not, not so close to December.
Yes. And would it be possible to start early, certainly? Six thirty, or did people work wise and doesn't work? I mean, if we could, I was just thinking tonight, like, if we could start our meetings at six or. That would, in general, I don't know if that works for everybody, because I don't know everybody's timeline. But maybe we can even take that.
Who's got a hand up? Commissioner Riley?
Hey, so I, I am in favor of extra sessions. But also I was wondering why we wouldn't have the public hearing for the B L I in, in September, just to get it. Off our plate and down the road, because we didn't have a lot of questions about it tonight.
Thank you, Vice Chair Riley. So part of my thinking was, one, I wasn't sure. Whether there, there were going to be significant questions. But secondly, it takes some time just to get in and out of public hearings. And, you know, so that, having lots of public hearings. Just sort of burns our time on process. So that, but, I mean, that's certainly something that. Is, you're welcome to provide feedback on tonight. We could, we could break this up into, I mean, we don't have a lot of opportunities for a lot of other public hearing. Sessions unless we wanted to use those off dates. But anyway, that was my rationale is that you do burn time just getting in and out of a public hearing.
I was just wondering if we could do a, ask the commissioners if we could meet earlier as an other option as well, just get a roll called.
You mean in addition to the, the additional meetings that are set up on the schedule here? Meet earlier in addition to those or?
Yeah, in general, if we can meet earlier than. If we could start meeting, it's meeting, our meetings at six in general and the work studies. Possibility.
Yep. Commissioner Clark, is our bylaws specify, specify the start time of the meeting? Yeah, and we could change our bylaws to change our meeting time.
Yes, the, the bylaws do specify six thirty for the regular meetings.
Would be nice to get started earlier, especially to get dark, my being a baby.
Yeah, so our study sessions as our special sessions, as Alex has pointed out, we're not hemmed in to start early. And we could, we could start whenever we want.
Yeah, particularly as a study, a study session.
So which, and what we're looking at in front of us is three of those are the regular meetings there. So. I'm looking at the proposed, the.
They're on.
In the packet. I've got the planning commission, the proposed meeting schedule there on, it's page nine of twelve in the packet.
And, and Steph, certainly we'd be happy to do, so, so something of a doodle poll. Where we're asking about specific dates and, and times. That it can be a, a detailed doodle poll like that can take ten or fifteen minutes to answer. But that, it certainly be, if the commission's up for doing that work, I think that might be helpful.
I don't, I don't have a problem with earlier time on our regular meeting or the study sessions. It's great, you know, that I can pick up. But I, I will note that on that October twenty eighth meeting and then November eleventh, I'll be gone for both of those. So. I'll be gone for an entire month from, from mid to late October to November. But I'll think, think of you guys down at Grand Canyon, so. Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, for the record, I'm okay with, with the, one of those second, second Tuesday meetings. But I expect to not be available on September twenty third. Other than that, I expect to be available, flexible.
Commissioner Riley?
I, I think that the time is in for our, if there's an extra meeting in the month. I think it also has the same time, but we could still fix that. But I, I'm going to be gone in October and November. It sounds like the same time you are.
Okay, we should make sure we have a forum for that time then. And I'll connect with you to get our dates. Commissioner Hazel?
I'm also gone September twenty third, as is Commissioner Clark.
Okay, all right. So we got two out on September twenty third? Yep, we can check the terms. Sure you need a recommendation? So October twenty eighth, we're, and November eleventh, we're two down. That'll help to. Yeah, that'll help to understand the schedule, I guess.
It's September twenty third, two down.
I've got you out on September twenty third, yeah.
I don't, there's no reason that we couldn't hold a public hearing on a date that's not the regular meeting date. So properly noticed. Would, would the chair and vice chair be available on fourteenth of October?
Yeah, I think that's. I'm just blanking if that's my fire, firefight me.
Sure, well, Steph, the follow up.
I think, I think that. And it's facing the, the meeting name.
I, I, I think, I, I've got, I think, pretty clear direction at this point. So there is, there is the appetite for, for using some of these second, second Tuesdays. Let's, we'll all send a follow up poll to see if there are objections to starting study sessions at perhaps five thirty. And it looks like, so I guess the final thing would be, yeah, are there, are there other questions or concerns? About this work schedule? Because I, I've certainly got what I needed out of this discussion thus far.
Yeah, it should be good. Any additional questions?
So I guess, so we're not going to be able to pull, pull this on here as over the, that's what we do in schedule.
I, yeah, I think, I think so. I think let's plan on meeting on the ninth of September. Will get. And then what I'll, I will do a poll though, in terms of who's available at five, as far as the start time.
Okay, great.
And then the, should we talk about the code cleanup list? So. In, I, I thought it would be a good exercise. I don't, I don't want to put you through the, the headache of going line by line through this document. But in part, in part, in preparation for the, the housing. Planning assistance grant application and in part. Because I was aware that we had a number, I, I'd seen a number of different lists of sort of outstanding code items. I thought it'd be helpful to, to put them in one, one document. I don't, frankly, I don't. Didn't fully think through what, what process I wanted to do this evening in terms of prioritization. I think my primary purpose was to make sure that you all have a chance to spend some time with us. If there are items that are missing. I think the prioritization really leads toward our work next year. But, and I think there are a number of these things that we should sort of keep side by side. With our planned code amendments for November. You know, if we're touching portions of this cloak, this code for, for other reasons, we may have opportunities. To, to address these items. But so again, but, but my main purpose in, in including this in your packet was to. Put it in front of you all, so you had an opportunity to digest it and, and see if there were, there were items that. You all were aware of or were expecting to see on such a list that, that, you know, that I'm not aware of. Particularly given that, you know, staff turnover that we've had. And, yeah, so I, I think that those, those. Those comments or additions would be welcome, you know, in any format and anytime you all want to share them with staff. Chair Volker?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I just, I appreciate you doing these lists and honestly, and coming up with this timeline.
Unless there are other comments, should we move on to the, to the item five D?
Yeah. Absolutely.
This may be, well. Next week at city council, I'm going to share with them a proposal. That regional D L C D staff brought to both the housing authority of Jackson County. And to, and to the city. And that is, they believe Josh, he believes that there may be a route. To allow. Affordable housing development on what is the T A four area. So that's the urban reserve immediately north of the city on the west side of highway ninety nine. I think it's approximately seventeen acres. The, it is a complex, it's complex from a, from a land use standpoint. In that it is specifically called out in the, in the regional problem solving document as for industrial uses. The, the possibility that, or that Josh with D L C D raised. Is to use what Senate Bill eight actually provides for an allowance. Or, or requires local governments to allow affordable housing inland zone for industrial uses. There's some. Legalistic questions there about whether those two things actually line up to allow. Affordable housing. Because the regional problem solving isn't actually zoning. And the Senate Bill eight refers to land that's zoned for industrial uses. So the regional problem solving did a very unusual thing in naming a specific use rather than a type of zone. So anyway, it's not a hundred percent clear that there's a route there. But. What the housing authority of Jackson County asked me is to, is to take city council's temperature. On just the interest of pursuing that. It's the, it's the large, pretty much square parcel immediately north of Culver Road. Just west of this, of highway ninety nine.
The orchard, the old orchard, across Culver from Campbell.
Between Culver and the substation, and then all the way back to the railroad tracks.
That's industrial, that's zoned.
It's, I'm not sure what it's currently zoned. Yeah, it's, it's, so it's current, Matt was saying it's currently zoned exclusive farming. But under the regional problem solving, it's for, for annexation purposes. It wa, it's designated to be industrial when brought into the, the city.
Which may or may not have been.
I guess for that.
Right, yep.
Yeah.
Which may or may not have been retribution for the destruction of the orchard and the disappearance of the water rights. But anyway. Sorry, Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, it seems like I remember that the, the regional problem solving has sort of its own internal. Processes for making amendments that pretty, like, it's got to go back to all the different players. And all, you know. So.
So.
Where does that leave us?
Yes, so the proposal is not to actually try to amend the regional problem solving plan. The proposal is to leave that in place, but the city. The proposal is to leave that in place, but the city. So the city would bring it in as industrial land. And then could allow affordable housing. Well, actually, the city would be required to allow affordable housing under this interpretation of Senate Bill 8. Commissioner Hazel is.
Thank you, Commissioner Hazel, sorry, thank you.
Thanks. So this is more of a, I think, practical question with this scenario. If, if we allowed residential housing to be built in industrial zoned land, we couldn't stop industry from building. How would we buffer that? And maybe this is a question for later on, but it's something to consider that, you know, once, once you have housing. You're going to have conflict with anything coming up against residential housing. I mean, if you, if somebody builds their house there, they're not going to like having. And it, some industrial. Building behind them or, you know, function, I mean, that's just, I think it's just human nature, you're not going to want that. Now, I think that's something that we need to consider also, i- if we allow that or, or pursue it, like, it sounds like we have to allow it or the state has to allow it. How, how do we, how do we do that seamlessly or somehow we have to? Plan for that as well, and I, I'm not sure what the answer to that is.
So the part, part of the answer is that this entire scenario. Pretty much assumes that housing authority of Jackson County is able to achieve site control over the entirety of this area. It's one parcel. So, and the housing authority has a pretty substantial. Grant from the remainder of the reorgan, the CDBG disaster recovery grant to build some additional multifamily affordable housing in the region. And it's because of the strong interest among a number. Participants at the state, including Representative Marsh, that we explore every opportunity for more of that housing to be close to the burn scar. That this possibility is being explored. The housing authority is generally, I think. Pretty conservative about taking on challenging land use issues, but they have, they're, they're willing to at least consider this one. Because of that strong interest.
Thank you.
So there's mainly, mainly just a FYI, I didn't want to have that discussion with council without you all being, you know, to, to not mention it tonight.
Quite a, quite a chunk of land, great. So we're on to propositions and remarks from the commission, if any, one has. Commissioner Riley?
I wanted to ask if the city had, was continuing to post public notices in the Rogue River paper and. Rather than our Rogue Valley Times, which actually covers our area.
So, yes, the, the city does. Often use the Rogue River Press in part because they have a, they're well set up to provide affidavits. For the publication, and that is often a requirement of some public notices. I think, I think it's a fair question whether perhaps we should be doing both, but that, that's, that's the logic behind. My, my understanding of that, that sort of recent practice of using Rogue River Press.
You know, that, that's convenient, but, but the, the law is written very clearly that it's the, the paper of record for the, the area. And if, you know, somebody needs to help them figure out how to give us. What we need to prove that we posted it, we should do that, but, but nobody here reads the Rogue River Paper, and the law is very clear about. It being the paper that serves the area where the meeting is going to happen.
I. I hope this doesn't sound argumentative, but I, I think the law, the law was written in, at the time and also sort of assumes that they're. Asumes it's actually a printed, published paper.
The Rogue Valley Times is a printed, published paper.
I think at the time that the practice was changed, I'm, I think it was probably at the time between when the Tribune was. I, well, I don't know the history, so. I, I, I hear you, and yeah, we'll take a look at that. Perhaps it's both, but yeah, your point's well taken.
We know they don't do affidavits at the Rogue Valley.
Honestly, this is a practice that I inherited, and I have not.
Maybe they could do affidavits and we don't even know.
It is, it's possible.
Other remarks or propositions? There are no assignments represented to the council. So with that, this meeting's adjourned to 8:02 PM. I thank you, Kathy, I saw Kathy was there, she's probably gone, oh, she's so good. Thanks, Kathy. I saw that Kathy was there, just failed to acknowledge her.
Good night, all.